To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
We're here tonight for a public hearing on the DDA development plan and the TIP plan. So, yes, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Corey and Chris are here to answer questions from the DDA. So, any public comment? Yes?
My name's Pete Garwin. I'm the Antrim County Administrator. And we received your notification and appreciate that. We are looking at your plan. And one of the things, just that, you know, usually when we get one of these, what the first thing we do is we opt out and then we sit down with the community and put together an tax sharing plan, which means, you know, we look at the list of projects that you have and decide if we're, you know, onboard with all those projects. And in the tax sharing plan typically, you know, it would list the ones that we, you know, were in favor of recapturing county taxes for. You guys established this DDA in 1992, which is pre- in 1993, the law changed that allowed both the local units of government that you capture the taxes of to opt out. So, we're just having our civil council look at your plan, look at your DDA setup and just to see if it's possible for the county to opt out. And we haven't come to conclusion on that. Either way, you know, even if we can opt out, we typically come to an agreement with the community in regards to the projects that were interested in participating in. And, okay, so that's kind of where we're at from the county standpoint. And I guess just to point out something that seemed kind of a, you know, that just kind of stuck out to myself and to Sherry, Sherry's our county treasurer. You have less than $100,000 worth of projects and you're looking to collect over $1 million. Typically, in a TIP plan, you would list all the projects and put a dollar amount to them. I know it's kind of hard to do when you're looking that far in advance, but that's typically the way you do it. And it may even be that you're required to do that because it does have something in there that indicates that you would return the money to the local units of government if not spoken for. So, that was one thing that kind of stuck out to us. Anything else? Got something specific? Oh, oh, yeah, that was another thing that, oh, this is Janet Koch, she's our associate planner. We noticed that it's based on a 3% growth and we were worried about that, actually. We thought it might be a little bit too optimistic, especially in the next two years here. So, okay, those are the comments we got. Thank you.
And we also talked to Northern Lakes Economic Alliance. They're under the impression that after February 15, 1994, you don't have the option to opt out, but I'm sure we'll figure that out.
Yeah, right.
That's all in our hands, so let's just, wherever it is. And then, when you mention the fact that projects that they had $100,000, we were under the, I think, Corey, financial risk that until they plan a specific project, and this was through Northern Lakes too, you don't get quite that detailed in, you know, they haven't actually brought a specific project to us for financing, to anybody. That's just their start of a developer plan with possible project. Now, I was under the impression that as they plan one plan, they then have to put that plan together with a budget and with the way they're going to finance it and bring it through the council for that plan, for that project to be approved. Does that?
And the plans can be amended as well. There could be other public.
Yeah, I think that that will be, every time you come back with another project, it'll be an amendment to the plan, as I understand.
Because as of now, they haven't brought a project to us. This is just their DDA plan to get a TIP plan in place.
Okay.
You got that correct? There's no project that dropped to us for financing.
Sure.
At all, yet.
Okay. Any other? Any other public? Yes?
I'm Andrew Smith from Central Lake Township. I had some of the same questions as the county. Why are we collecting $1 million when we only have $78,000? Once again, I had the same impression that you're supposed to collect what you have planned based on the law and of your council. So, maybe that would be a thing to check into for sure before passing this plan. And then, also, why have the TIP for 30 years? A lot of municipalities do different amounts of time. So, if we're planning on $78,000, on your projections, you can capture that within nine years. Is there a reason why we're going straight out for 30 years, 30 years of the maximum allowed?
So, we're just trying to take all the money we can? Is that the?
No. I mean. What they take by state statute of their TIP is all tax dollars on property increases. We don't control that much, the type of tax. Now, if they don't use that money, then that comes into the part where they return it to those taxing jurisdictions, in my impression. But right now, none of that has happened. We're looking at a, at a projection.
It's a 3% projection.
At that 3% growth, at that anticipated increase in revenue, that's what we would give.
And nothing gets approved until everybody approves it. It's not like, you're asking for $1 million, but you're not going to give it.
Well, I mean, that's what I want, I want people to be realistic about, you know, what you're getting too, because, I mean, you see the $1 million and from the taxpayer point of view, $1 million, that's a lot of money to spend, you know, on the downtown area. And then, at the same time, is the DDA really going to even collect $1 million?
By that time, $1 million's going to be worth.
And it's set up over 30 years. That works out like $32,000 a year.
Yeah, I think, I think, the DDA's been real realistic in the fact that those numbers are projection.
Right.
The fact is, how much money is the DDA going to collect off a TIP plan in the next five years? I think they've all said it, probably a very minimal amount. Until the value of the downtown area, of the DDA area grows, there's absolutely nothing they're going to collect in TIP dollars. So, is it going to grow slow? Absolutely. Is the DDA looking at trying to figure out how to spend $1 million? Absolutely not. They're not even looking to try to spend $5,000, I mean realistically.
Right.
So, and I know what the perception is. That's definitely not. You don't have a plan to spend $1 million in 30 years or even collect. You have to, you have to have that TIP plan. You have to have something to start with. They could reduce that to 1% growth. I don't know where you pick that number. Does anybody else have a better idea? Jim Cowan, the same thing. It's a number you just, you adjust as you go.
Well, on that number, it's limited by either inflation or 5%. I mean, the most you're ever going to get is 5% in a year, and then it's going to be limited by inflation. So, right now, I mean, we're on the borderline of either deflation or, you know, very low inflation, so.
Yeah, so you just answer.
No, that, no, that's what I was trying to point out, is that on one hand, you know, looking for $1 million, you know, that's what I was trying to point out, is both sides of this, you know, making sure the DDA boards are aware that it's probably not going to be $1 million, but at the same time, from the taxpayer's side, that you're looking for $1 million. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right. The next question is, why capture money from the fire department, ambulance, emergency 911, library, commission 18 and Meadow Brook? All very valuable services in this county that are pretty sharp like cash already.
One of the reasons, we look at all the different places we capture money from. It's not capturing any money that they're spending today. It's capturing the increase in the value of the property and the percentage of that.
Well, it's capturing the whole increase of the property. Unless you guys are excluding inflation, which looks like it's down here.
Yeah, but nobody's property's going to appreciate it and improve the towns right there. Like, for example, the Villers doing that, I mean, they got that grant for $300,000.
I'm not, I'm not saying going to a TIP at all. Well, in this question, I'm not saying, not to a TIP at all, but in this question, I'm asking about specialty services. That's, let's see. It's only four, I think it was 4.9 mils out of your projected 24.3 mils. So, if you could exclude the services from that, you're still going to be, by the end of the projection, you're still going to have $903,837.17. So, and that's where they're excluding those services. So, I mean, you'd still have plenty of money and then we wouldn't be, you know, just taking money from 911 ambulance service that we already don't know if they're going to have enough money to operate in the fire department. You know, it's just another thing to look at. You can, in the fire department, I was passing this letter, is that as a special assessment? And it says downtown development authorities are not even allowed to capture special assessments? I didn't have time to check that out. I was just seeing this as we walked in. So, another thing to think about, the services. And then, the act also allows either the DDA or the governing body, which is the Village Council here, to exclude inflation from their TIP plan. And if we're saying that all these increases are coming from actual increases in by doing capital improvements, we could exclude inflation from that since you're saying that there's going to be capital improvements that will also be, I mean, you know, kind of go both ways there on that one.
Yeah, we can't talk both ways. I mean, if you, if you look at what happened to the tax value of the properties in town based on the rest of the statement, right, because of the loss of revenue and appreciation of property, because we have the economy other than tourism, and you're now having a tax base increase basically now because you're out of the industry.
Right.
And, and the only thing is you have is tourism. And, and what's happened is you have to do something to attract people to come live here.
Right.
If not, for example, what's happened is in all of Northern Michigan, it's happened in every other touristy area. It's all disposable income. And so, what's happened is nobody can sell their property downstream. So, now we've had like a six or seven year of people who can't sell the property downstream. They lost money on their 401K and so, and then a bunch of people died. So, you didn't replace them with new older people, right, who were going to help build the economy in this area by hiring carpenters, building a lot of their house. When we look at things, like if you even try and build a house up here, you can't build a house because it'll never appraise for the value of the amount it costs you to build when people are selling their houses at 65 cents, $65 a foot, right? So, what we have to do is find ways to improve and want people to want to come to our town, put our kids in school. If we don't do all these types of things and make Central Lake a little nicer, it'll end up like Elsbury, right? It won't even have a grocery store. It won't even have any businesses. And then, nobody's going to come here and you'll have eight man football. You know, so, so it's a catch 22. So, I guess what we're trying to say is it's been too long since there has been any really major input and improvements other than the local businesses trying to do certain things and make it better. And so, we need anybody helping the state and from the county and everybody to make us more attractive, to keep up the economy, to make our tax base grow, to make the value of our properties go up, and to have money for our schools and our ambulances and everything. Ultimately, it benefits everybody.
But.
It benefits everybody.
But none of those taxing agencies are going to see any benefit until 30 years down the road because everything above current day values are being captured. You're not allowing for any inflation or anything.
Only, only values captured are within the DDA.
Right.
So, if the downtown district area grows because the DDA now invests in, and it increases property values, it will increase property values outside of the DDA. It will increase property values in the township and the county. And that, that's the general intent of doing all this. So, as property values go up, it raises the taxable, the taxes that can be affected for the fire department, for the MS 4911. So, if you look at the big picture, everybody down at its front.
Outside the DDA.
Inside and out.
30 years.
Right. You got 30 years inside the DDA and then as things improve, it should be almost a minimum.
Right.
The next is, why are the condos included in the DDA district?
Because they were in the DDA border boundaries in 1992.
Well, I mean, you're allowed to adjust the borders based on current things and, I mean, are you planning on doing improvements to them by the condos or anything?
There's nothing in the development plan to do that.
So, I, so we could, I mean, you guys could adjust the borders for the condos then, if you're, I mean.
Would we require another public hearing to adjust the borders?
Right, I mean.
Have they amended ordinance to adjust the borders?
Yeah.
But why would you?
Once again, we're just trying to get, I mean, this is a feeling that you're giving. You're just trying to get as much, well, let's capture all this because we can, let's get the condos because we can. That's, I mean, that's an impression that you're giving off right now is you're just trying to get as much as you can.
Now, you have the bill, where's the bill's money? Come here. Just ask condos, right?
Well, the DDA district was set up waiting for the condos.
So, to make that statement that we included the condos just to try to collect the taxes, maybe what the public perceives, but if they look at them, the proof of it was the DDA was set up in 1992 and the boundaries had grown. And if you read on downtown areas to show that you have senior living within your downtown area is a benefit to your DDA and your downtown.
But it's a simple ordinance amendment, she said, to change that because now you know that condos are there and businesses won't be there.
Well, then, then should we exclude every residential home within the DDA?
Well, I mean, this just goes down and around the condos, like, are they right across there? I mean, both follow your line straight across. All right, next question.
Well, what I'm saying is, they, what? The way they look at us to stay whatever is wrong, please. You don't eliminate certain people just because they're senior citizens or because it's equal.
So, they like to see that the whole community is one and support itself.
Always.
Maybe they'd like to have another senior citizen coming here and hiring 20 people to hire a nursing staff.
Right. But I mean, look at Brooks and Hertz Street. You eliminated those, you obviously knew that those were not businesses and, you know, the line was drawn.
Well, let me comment on that. That's, we didn't know, we didn't set that up.
Right.
That was set up in 1992. So, the 1992 DDA obviously did that according to public opinion and the public hearing at the time.
But it's not like the holy grail that it can't be changed. That's what I'm saying here, is that, you know, you could take into account, we know these are condos now.
My question is, why would the township want us to be there?
Just to have the most effective DDA because if you're able to focus on where the DDA district is, why wouldn't you want that? Because you're never going to focus any efforts on the condos, so.
We may, we may extend the streets here, for example. We don't want to, you don't want to exclude that area necessarily. Maybe go a little bit over sale in the next, I'd face a little, I'm not sure. A little bit, and maybe that's something that the DDA would look under, like, purchase it. So, I don't want to exclude it necessarily based on that, but there's no plans to do it there.
And they, and they plan that you wouldn't have to have it approved.
Right.
See, everybody here, everything is not like, say, if we do that, that means it's going to happen. It still takes the DDA, these guys, right, to present it to the town. You can build it on.
Well, and that's what I'm just looking for, I mean, these are questions that have came about and so that's why I'm asking them here again. It's not necessarily, you know.
I think everybody thinks that some of the stuff that we're projecting, none of it gets approved unless we all agree on it.
Yeah, and that's what, that's why it's good that we can talk about it here and now people understanding why you would like the condos in there, maybe the street scape laying around or, I mean, that's, that's what we're here for, is to get information that's, that we're trying to do.
Andrew, I, I think, you know, you get a lot of studies, I think, as far as within the downtown area, to have that concentrated area of what is basically more senior residential living and to be able to include them, to have walkability to the downtown area and have control over that, and control might be the wrong word, but like, they want to improve sidewalk or lighting or streets, I think is great and that's included in our downtown area for walkability to downtown.
And that's a good answer. I mean, I, you know, I just said no, and so that's what I was asking. Can you explain the figures of the last three years of the county? They just aren't adding up for me in your proposal. The county, 2042, 3 and 4, I think, yeah. The chart, the last three years of the county.
2040, year 2042 through 2044, is that what you're talking about?
That's right.
Is there a mistake in the formula?
Yes, sir. It should be, for 2042, it should be 21, 3, 99, 88. 2043 should be 22, 515, 13. And 2044 should be 23, 663, 83.
For capture tax.
For the capture value, yes.
There may be a mistake in the formula. We can adjust that.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, that brings the total amount to 1,076,629.57.
I'll look at that.
Is that a setup in a sell program?
Yeah, I may have a topic or something, but I'm pretty sure I could just go down and make that happen. So, I'll look at that.
So, you want us to have more than $1 million? I'm adding even more money to you guys. We already talked about the grocery. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
If I read that right, it said you may not relocate some people?
That is incorrect. It's, if you look, if you actually read the plan, the plan says there's no plans to relocate anybody in the downtown area.
Okay, good.
In the notice, that's where it got confused.
No, I wanted to know the answer to that. Corey, can you clarify though? You may not have plans, but you could do that.
The DDA has, has the power from the state of Michigan to relocate people, but it'd have to be for public use and it'd have to go through hearing. So, there's no, there are no plans to relocate anybody. That's just boilerplate plate stuff that has to be in the plan. We have no plans to relocate anybody, and that's what had to be on the notice as well. So, there's no plans.
And actually, to really clarify, the DDA does not have the authority to do it. The village has the authority to do it and then deed that property to the DDA, but it's the same thing. It has to be for a public use. It's very strict. I, it could be a very complicated thing to do, in my opinion. The aftergrund is solely for public use, that there's no other options. You pay 125% of the value of the property.
Where are you going to get the money to do that?
Well, that's, you know, the state, it's in the state statute, it's been, you know, in this town, you've had the right to take property like that for a long time. Like, how many years ago was Michigan actually changing that law so they restrict it even more?
Well, the opposite thing is they encourage you to have more and more income housing for people. In other words, they like that, they like extra, they want more apartments. They want places for people to have. In fact, I think the Baklins are trying to get something for them through the state to be able to redo all their apartments up and down. Have additional housing, things like that. And nicer houses. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
I just have a question regarding the comments that people are making here today. Well, how will these be incorporated into the plan? You know, what's the next, what's the next steps?
The next step is for the Village Council to approve the plan.
But the DDA will have a meeting before your council meeting?
I can't speak for the DDA.
Well, no, I mean, the calendar can. It's, the next meeting is the first Wednesday and then the following two, second Thursday would be the council meeting.
The DDA, develop a plan through the village or approve it. So, we'll take all these comments and carry them into consideration at the, I'm sure we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Yeah, because I do it tonight. Just to get the input from everybody and if there's any misunderstandings.
Clarification.
Well, lots of interpretation and jargon sometimes.
I have a question in here that says that you've adopted the Main Street four-point approach as far as the design and plan for the future of downtown. And from attending the trainings, what I've come away with is that the core principles behind the Main Street program are volunteerism and historic preservation. I didn't see mention of either of those things in the DDA development plan, and so I just wondered how you.
Hey, you said a task. I'm trying to write them down. One of the four things you stated.
Well, what I'm thinking.
You said volunteerism.
I'm saying the two core principles, as I understand them, of the Main Street program are volunteerism and historic preservation. Historic preservation is what it was founded on, it was actually founded by the United States Historic Preservation Society originally. And yet, there's no mention of historic preservation or volunteers in your DDA development plan. So, I wondered if you could explain a little what you see as the role of historic preservation and the kind of the authentic history that exists in Central Lake and if you have a plan for that and, you know, your future design for the downtown area.
As we continue along with the Main Street training, we will follow along. That's included in part of the Main Street, adopting the Main Street approach.
Well, it's like the key point.
It is, but it's, we adopt the Main Street approach. We're not adopting just the pieces that we like. We're adopting the Main Street approach.
I know, but I, I understand. And I've attended the training with you and I've actually asked the trainers there if you can just take pieces of it and not really embrace or fully engage in the historic preservation element. And they were quite specific in their answer, and that was no. And so, I just wondered what you see the role of historic preservation to be, given that it's not mentioned at all in here. And for me, I think that's, it's critical for Central Lake because.
Well, I think I agree with you, but I don't know how we necessarily include it. Because one of the things you've got to be careful with, and I've spoken to other DDA's and other directors, DDA directors out of Traverse City, you just don't want to put yourself in a corner with the development plan. You don't want to say, well, we're not, you know, historic, historic development, and so everything's got to have to do with historic. I mean, you've got to be really careful painting yourself into a corner.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Okay, well, and I.
I'm talking as, as a fundamental working with what you have, you know, and based on.
Well, what we have to work with is what we have to work with. And I, I think everybody on the DDA is under the same impression that we want to be, want to preserve Central Lake. We like the way it is. We just want to make certain things better. So, I don't think there's any intention to steer away from that. So, I mean, are you asking if we should include something like that in the plan? Is that what you're going?
Well, I think that if you are going to use the Main Street approach, the four-point approach as a selling point of your DDA development plan and an argument for getting used TIP terms, then yeah, you should embrace the program fully or, or not. Or mention it. It's either you're all in or you're not, and, and you can't not include, you know, plans for historic preservation, commercial mixed use, walkability, the character of your downtown, all of those things. And, you know, I just, I guess I'm having a hard time like understanding what exactly the vision is there. And from talking to other people who are working on the plan, they also seem to not have, well, they haven't expressed a value for certain historic buildings that exist and certain walking corridors that exist and previous improvement plans, you know, for the streetscaping, for instance, recommendations from the gap study that Antrim County did recently about impervious surfaces and things like that. And I just think it's at, we're at a critical time in Central Lake's future. And so, I wondered, like, how important that's going to be in all of this. I think, in my opinion, it should be.
I'm sure we'll look at everything. You know, we've got, there's, there's 10 people on the board right now. I'm sure we'll look at everything that comes our way and try to, try to look at it with a critical eye and, and it's the best I can do, and, and I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Hey, Corey, right on page three, item four, it says, "A handsome appearance in downtown district." From what Patty Hill, you can put preservation in there or something in there, and that would go to what she's talking about now. Volunteerism, you're on that.
Right. And in 2004, I, I, maybe this is not, you know, important to this thing, but in 2004, they did a Chain of Lakes downtown enhancement study through the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance, and they made a trajectory for Central Lake back then that I think still apply now. And some of them were the things that you're already doing, focusing on parks and bringing in non-motorized water sports and emphasizing your freaking awesome location on the Chain of Lakes. But also embracing your history by walking tours and things like that and things that will, you know, keep people in that downtown area and create a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly, family-friendly, you know, and livable environment. And part of that, I think, is the. And part of that, I think, is the stuff that is already in existence. And I guess what I'm looking for is sort of, what is your attitude toward preserving the historic buildings that are right now in the DDA district?
Patty, if, if, I've read a lot on historic preservation, as you have. To me, it's a real difficult decision on what's an historic building and the significance of it. And I'm not taking away from any building in Central Lake, but I'm, that's a, that's a lot of conversation to get into. I'm sure you know, I mean, what, what do you do to get a building classified as an historic building? Or an historic district?
You can start a local historic district, it doesn't have local historic buildings, and you can, one of the suggestions they made in the economic study was to do a walking tour, and you could, you know, those are the things, like the lot that you just received from Alden Bank is an historic site in your town. You could somehow commemorate that and include those things in, as far, you know, as far as the downtown buildings in Central Lake, given the way they're designed, two stories with housing above, like Bachmans and things like that. Those are like primo in terms of everything I've heard from the Main Street people, of the kind of, the buildings that you want to develop. That's what's happening in Bel Air, for instance, and in Boyne City and the other communities, I think, that we're, you know, maybe trying to emulate a little bit.
We'll learn more about that as we do go through the Main Street program. You know, there's, we have talked to them over there, that we've talked about saving historic district and what would be necessary to do that. So we've got to get, you know, one thing at a time and get through the process. Once we get through the process, we'll get some technical expertise in here, and we'll explore, you know, explore options like that. Just because it isn't, and not, everything's going to be in the plan to start off with. This is a document that we can come back here in another couple of years, and we can say, hey, we want to do these projects going forward. And we can adjust the plan at that point. Nothing, you know, it's just a, a starting point for the DDA.
I will agree, I will agree with Patty in fact that if the DDA feels historic preservation of downtown area is important, it should be in the plan. What that is, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, and like you said, you start a historic district, that defines those buildings and the criteria to be such. But if, if that truly is the intention, I, I agree, it shouldn't spell out how, but it should say historic preservation or whatever the wording is, is, is a part of the DDA plan.
Right. And that was another thing in the master plan, when they did that study, that was one of the things that they actually suggested, was making some type of mentioning of that in your zoning ordinances and things, so that you could actually kind of legislate for that type of designation. And I'm just, you know, it's important, and I think that Central Lake is uniquely positioned. If I were a fair marketing person, I would sell it as, you know, an unhidden gem on the Chain of Lakes with this incredible historic downtown that has a true authentic character remaining, and I would work in every way I could to preserve those characteristics.
I think you just want to cheer for your company. Thank you.
Volunteerism is a hard word to say.
There's your volunteerism. Well, you saw it, Laun asked you.
No, I, you know, because...
No.
And that's why I do think it's important, and it reminds me, that's what you have that nobody else really has. It's all there, and it's all in the history.
Is exactly who get more involved. Already, just because of some of the things we've talked about, as you well know, Michelle Bachman donated her property to be used as a little park. Even let her put the electric in for free. B and M put the water and tapped off of Bachman's water to water the grass. Lyle loves the builder, built the stage between him and I. Sam helped out and did some things, right? The grass, the color, because I'm pulling it up, it's an ice skate rink, right? And then we talked, and the Alden Bank thing, by them donating the land, knowing that we're actually going to do something with it rather than just sit there. So there's three distinct projects that cost the village literally nothing, right? They get quick improvement where there's no movement. So if people see the movement, that one, they tend to participate more because other people have.
Yeah, I've seen most of the stuff that the county has done, just as a side note.
Thank you, Patty.
Yep, yep.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I do. When does the DDA expect to have a more comprehensive vision? Is it a couple of years when you have another plan?
We've explored plans, and they range in price from about eight thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars to have a company come in and do, actually create a plan, help us create a plan, do some of the tech, have the technical expertise to go through. So that's actually, hopefully, in the next few years. So it depends on if we have the money and if we can use the money for, you know, what money we have for that. Expenditure grants, donations, that kind of thing as well, if you don't pay for some of these projects.
Cory, I think I might put people's minds in. What, what, what does the DDA have for any fiscal plan in the next few years? I mean, other than work on the open space, work on the lot? Is there any, in my impression, there's, there's no plan out there, other than very small limited things like Chris talked about?
Yeah, the, those kind of things, and then the development plan. And tip, tip money's, as far as I understand, only used for what's in this development plan.
Well, I mean, the development plan, there's some visions in there and some dreams and some hopes, but as far as things actually on the ground that they're working on, besides the open space and the lot that Alden Bank graciously donated and the skating rink.
There's a progress market.
But basically, am I correct in that?
Yes.
There are no huge plans out there. Am I, am I correct in that statement?
That's correct.
Then last thing I do, do you...
I just wanted to add one thing. Typically, when we, when the county enters into a tax sharing plan, you know, whether we do or not, it's still up in the air, of course, but we typically try to limit the county's participation in projects that are bricks and mortar or, you know, infrastructure-based, that sort of thing. So I guess I just wanted to put that out there so you guys have an idea of where we're coming from typically.
Do you have any guess as to when you'll determine whether you really can outcome or not?
Oh, gosh, I gave our, I gave our civil council thirty days, and that was about a week ago.
Okay, because we've truly looked at it for probably a year, and everybody that's came back up, the Michigan Municipal, North Carolina Economic Alliance, everybody reached out to, says no. Just so you know that, our impression will end with is after nineteen ninety-four.
The only question that I had about it was, is that the notification to the state was dated twenty thirteen.
That was the state wanted to see that it was adopted prior to that. Great seal of Michigan, that's why we sent that to them, to see that it was done in nineteen ninety-two.
I noticed they didn't, the seal didn't sign it on my...
Did we send to all the paperwork you needed? Let me ask you that. Okay, so we're working on it, just, just we stay in the loop and we'll, whatever it is, it is.
Rather than you recreating it all, you'll just sit down and...
Rather than you guys don't know your own research. Oh, no, they have it all, they're just...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We got, we got a, we got a new civil council, and we got a break minute. Any other public comment?
I have a question that I might have to answer too, but there's a lot of mention of the lot that Alden State Bank donated. Is that the one that's right next to home they made on the corner?
Yes, just to the door.
Yeah, do you know what you're doing with that lot yet, or is that still part of the plan?
I don't think any decisions have been made.
There's just been, like, a lot of talk about it, so I was just looking, what do you have with that lot, or?
I think right now it's going to just be cleaned up as it is. I mean, no, there's no plan.
But I just know you guys, like, cut down, like, the...
It cleaned up the lot, I know that, and I took the, the other trees, whatever we looked at, the pine trees, you know? One doesn't even come through, you know? And Mike Mary Leonard, after going to Forests, we'll go look at those trees and see what he thinks of them, so. It's just now been work on cleaning up the lot. To that, there is no plan, other than to keep it nice looking. The lot will be made, and it will be mowed, be covered in ice, down there. No, no plan.
What's the, what's the word we hear about public restrooms? Where was the, where is that been suggested?
Well, there's been no decisions or, or...
Not even suggested?
It's been, it's been a committee and talked about, but there's...
Is that a corner that it would be, or?
I don't know. I mean, they'll, they'll have a plan for that.
There's all kinds of things thrown out.
Right, I've heard, I've heard of throwing the rug down.
And if anybody has any suggestions, the DDA is open to any suggestions, and we think they could.
More of them will have meetings the first Wednesday of the month.
Is the skating rink going to happen this winter?
Yes. The Bachmans have volunteered. I'm, I know all the lights last year, but it was so cold, we couldn't get the, we put it out last year, and we couldn't get the sand out of the trucks, or out of the ground, because we never had a thaw. So all the lights are up and ready to go in the, that's all, in the next, until next week or whatever, he's going to level it out, so he'll level field. There's a gentleman, I can't see his name right now, who volunteered to maintain it all winter and trade for, had a little bit of hockey time.
Oh, so it'll be, it'll be the size of a...
Yeah, I can't do checking there because my insurance won't cover it.
But it'll be the size of a hockey rink? It'll be the size of a hockey rink?
It's fifty by ninety.
I don't know how big a hockey rink is. Is it a little...
Uh, no, not that, not that big. Needs to be bigger.
Sixty-five something?
Yeah, fifty by ninety, and we have a little bambini. It looks like a little lawnmower, and it makes it nice and smooth.
Ooh.
And you go behind it, there's a little water thing, a little water tank that has a tube to come out of it, like a bambini does with a brush, and then smoothes and everything, and fills in little drips, and then fills in all the, the level places. Along the, the zamponi, which is called, this one's called a bambini, because it's the smallest one, it's got blades, it's just like, they're ma, it's made for lawnmower, and it just cuts it this way and smoothes it out. So it has lots. We didn't put any rails in because we're afraid that if you, it would be like shin knockers. It's better just to trip, so the edges will only be about six inches.
Well, once the snow gets outside.
It's a little wet, it's a little rough. I don't go ahead and water and everything because I have hot cold on the outside of my pillow. So it was backed the bambini up, and then I volunteered to, volunteered to the shed.
I didn't say I'm curious if I would.
Use the two, two, the two she shed, put the bambini in, so it's right there on the property so, so we can just go out there and...
A volunteer, right? A volunteer, right?
A volunteer.
You're going to rent skates? You're going to rent skates?
I think I'll be in Bachman's to do that. Well, in business, I'll do that. It'd be nice. And then also, you, you could clear up a spot on intermediate lake and get to it, and have some kind of fishing tournament and smooth it out. Which is kind of cool, you can do something like that during the year, which is, and then the calendar, as far as all the open areas, you want to tell them that?
No, you're doing really good.
Rachel is, is, volunteer if anybody wants to use any of the open areas, which we're not going to keep up in very late. Let's say a musician, like Steve Dawson, wants to pop in the Bachman's and just play music for me. He can. I have an extra projector and a screen and stuff, and I will move there or something. And if anybody wants to rent the lawn chairs and, and have, you know, some people just do a drop-in for music and such.
On the ice skating rink?
And it's going to be a calendar if anybody wants to use that one.
On the ice skating rink?
The open spaces.
Oh, the open space, I'm sorry.
And Rachel's going to keep the calendar, so any, any community member can just call up, say, hey, I'd like to use this for something. And there'll be no drinking cussing or...
I have drinking cussing.
There was that drinking cussing part.
I'm spinning on the floor.
How do they have beer?
I'm going to refer to rules.
You're not referring to rules?
That goes with the rules.
That goes with the rules.
First.
Oh, my God, that's probably not true.
It's a real little, but not really gone.
Any other public comment? Uh, yeah. Pete, does Bell Air have a DDA?
They do.
They do?
They, well, they're, they have banned in that DDA, correct?
Never really got permission to create it.
Okay, it, it was, yeah, they got part, partway through the procedures, and I think it was, it was never really done properly, so they abandoned that. They are working on something now, as I understand it.
How about Elk Rapids?
They do.
And does Elk Rapids have a tip plan?
They do. They do. Manzalona has one too.
Who else were we with that, that, that Main Street name looks for?
Charlevoix.
Charlevoix was establishing one, Gray Lane, El Fasco, Manzalona.
They have one.
Boyne City is...
Yeah, all of them said they just want to get right.
As of in the Main Street program.
Pete, one more question. How long has Elk Rapids had their DDA, you know, by the 10th ballpark?
Yeah, they've had like, actually, they've had, what, three of them, I think?
They've had three TIPs, but they're one DDA.
Yeah, one DDA, three tip plans, so three, three districts.
We've opted out of one. We currently are participating in a distant one.
And one, and two of them have expired, right? Only one has expired. The one down, the one in the downtown has expired. We're participating in one on the east side, east of thirty-one.
And we've opted out of a new one.
So how long was your old tip plan then? Ten years?
Uh, no, it was, I think it was, it was at least twenty.
So the twenty years, yeah. And in that time, did you take anybody's house?
Did we take anybody's? We didn't.
In Elk Rapids, in the twenty years? Well, I just, there's some concern again, and I want to make sure that...
What are you referring to?
Well, again, I want to make sure everybody's clear on this subject.
Did you take anybody's house?
It says, does the DDA have the authority to take someone's home located in the DDA district? Have you in the twenty years in Elk Rapids?
It wouldn't be us. You have to contact the village development office and see what they're going to do, if they're not.
And Manzalona's had their DDA held on, ballpark?
Nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety-four.
All right. And they have a tip plan as well?
They do.
All right. That's it.
I just got one other comment, and, you know, we're, we're just kind of, you know, talking about this and looking at stuff, but the way you got this laid out right now, every time you do a project, you're going to have to go through this whole process again, and I, okay, I wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's why, you know, and I will say that with Elk Rapids and with Manzalona, they put all of their plans in right, right at this point in time. And, and partly, you know, the, well, part of the reason they did that too is because, I, I, probably anyways, is because we did have the op, option to opt out with theirs, and, and we did do that until we sat down with them and, because we wanted to see, you know, exactly what projects they were going to spend the money on, and so whether or not we encouraged them to do that, or they were going to do it on their own, I don't know.
I think every DDA just wanted to get through this process because this will move the DDA, actually, the development plan, a tip plan, and just to make sure the community is okay with it all. And I think now, if this goes through, then they may be willing to have a definite plan. I know, they, probably, as I say, they do rally, but they, they, they use very, very much. Yes. Thank you. Any other public comment?
At what meeting will the village council determine whether they're going to accept